All right, welcome. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Greg and Amanda Kilwin, founders of Get Oil. Hi, guys.
Hello.
We also have Colin. It looks like Macy is here, too. We have a little understudy.
She is here. She is trying to crawl up to say hello, apparently.
There she is. Hi. Now, our Jess is on the way. She'll be here shortly and in the inbox. And you guys, if you came here looking for questions, answers to questions today, if you need help with something, we're here to help. So go ahead and put your questions in the Q and A. This is a live work session for anyone with questions on how to grow with Get Oil. And we'll be getting into website reviews and everything in the latter half of our time today. But what we are ridiculously excited about here today is to have our special guest trainer come out and share with us the secrets of growing social media in a way that is authentic and that actually works without it swallowing up all of your time. You've probably heard me deriding social media at certain times because it can be such a huge time suck and something that can be really ineffective if you don't do it right. Well, Jess is here today. She works her business on social media in three hours a week. She's got two littles running around the house. She spends all the time that she wants to with them. She spends three hours a week managing her social media and running everything for her young living business. And guys, she's bringing in one to two new members every single week from social media. So without further ado, I am so excited to give the floor over to Jessica Doeman, Young Living Gold Leader. I'm going to move us out of our panelist view so that we can see you while you're talking. So please take the floor. So excited to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I'm so excited to be here. I have been live now twice in the Get Oil and Facebook group, and I've loved all your comments and your questions and just your interaction and your engagement. I'm so excited to be here to talk to you guys, just shed some wealth and some knowledge on social media, which at some, at a lot of times lately gets a bad rap. And I can really understand where that comes from. I have a lot of friends who have been on and off social media hiatuses. And a lot of my team, my Young Living team, has been on social media hiatuses. But I wanted to just come and speak life back into social media and share with you guys a glimpse of what it can be for your young living business if you choose for it to be that way. I shared, and if you watched my live in the Get Oil and Facebook group, I shared, where else can you sit on your couch in sweatpants? Which, by the way, I'm not in sweatpants, for the record. I do have on jeans today, just for you guys. But where else can you sit on your couch in your sweatpants, if you wanted to, and talk to anybody in the whole wide world? Anybody and everybody in the whole wide world. Tell me where in the comments, if you have another solution where I can sit at home and talk to somebody, you know, in Australia. Let me know, other than Zoom, right? But let me know. I want to know where else you can have that power. And that is the whole, just the incredibleness of social media, right? That you can talk to anybody and everybody from one touch point, right, from sitting in your own home. I love that about being a busy mom and that I can still be home with my kids while my baby naps. And I can be working my business on social media, right? I can be signing people up and enrolling them. And that is, again, that is just how incredible social media is. And so if you hear nothing else from what we talk about today, hear that there's an incredible opportunity in social media if you use it appropriately to grow your young living business.
I love it. That's so exciting. So tell us, tell us your secrets. How do we, how do we do this, right? Like, we want to talk about growing our friends list, right? And expanding our network to be able to get more growth in our young living business. So what does that look like? How do we do that?
Yeah, so there's, there's a few different ways. And I have, that I do this on the daily, you guys. Number one, since actually you raised it initially, is I set boundaries around my social media. So Ashley alluded to how often, how much I'm on social media. And I only allow myself to work on social media three hours a week. That's it. I was somebody who got burnt out in the beginning, and I learned I needed to set boundaries if I wanted to continue to make this a scalable business. And so in doing that, I got really crystal clear on who I was serving, who I wanted to talk to. And what I wanted to do with social media was to grow my friends list, essentially. And how I do that, I'm going to share with you a way that you can do it on Facebook and a way that you can grow your friends list on Instagram. Let's be really clear. When I talk about growing your friends list, I'm talking about growing your, on Facebook, let's start there, your friends, if you will, okay? And a way that you can do this is number one, I want, before you even start doing this, is to get your mind right about making friends on social media. There's a huge misconception out there about making friends on social. And it's not weird. It doesn't have to be weird, okay? I want you to get your mind around, you are going to make friends on social media that, if you choose, can be some of the best friends you've ever known. And maybe you haven't even met them yet, okay? But I want you to think about making friends on social media, just like you would make friends out in the real world, okay? Like, when you meet somebody at a restaurant or at a coffee shop, okay? That's how we're going to meet friends on social media. And how you're going to do that in Facebook specifically is you are going to find Facebook groups that you love that speak to you. So for example, in your young living business, if a product that has made a huge difference in your life is Life9 and Ink Chorad, because it's made a huge difference in your gut health and your emotional health, you might join some Facebook groups that talk about managing emotions or managing stress or, you know, managing stress and motherhood. That's me. You would want to join those types of groups that light you up and give you fire, right? And once you get in those groups, you kind of, you see what people are posting and you start commenting, you start giving advice. You'll see lots of posts about what can I do or what have you tried to manage XYZ? Like stress or gut health or whatever. And you give comments and you give suggestions, okay? Now, because we're talking Young Living specifically in here, my recommendation would be that you don't say, hey, I want to share about Young Living Life 9 and what a difference it's made to me. But use it more in a general term, like, I have taken a fantastic probiotic that was recommended to me, and it's totally transformed my health. Comment that, okay? Leave a little bit of curiosity and wait for the person to comment back to you. And then start a conversation with them via the comments in the Facebook group. And then here's what you guys are going to say, all right? After you've made some connections with them and they've commented back and forth on that thread, you're going to say, hey, I'm going to send you a friend request because I'd like to talk to you further about this, and I'm going to message you, okay? It's not weird. I'm totally cool. I just want to help you further because I've been where you've been. That's it, you guys. You send him a friend request, okay? It's not weird. Don't make it weird. They have the opportunity to either accept your friend request or not. If they don't, no big deal, okay? I promise you, I don't go through, I send 10 or 15 friend requests a week. And that's about how many friends I make. I don't go through and say, oh, I talked to Sally and she didn't accept my friend request. Nobody has time for that, okay? And you're probably never going to talk to Sally again if she didn't accept your friend request. Okay, but just keep that conversation going, you guys. What you're doing when you're in these groups is they're just giving like tremendous value from a place of wanting to help people, which that's what it's all about for us young living people, right, is helping others.
I love it. I hope you guys are writing that down and paying attention, the way that Jess says, I'm going to send you a friend request, right? We're talking publicly, having a conversation. Remember, other people are watching, right? Like, they're going to be a little curious, too, and maybe they want to have a conversation with you when you set it up that way. I want to just, quick, quick detour here, real quick, Jess, if you don't mind. You have over 65,000 followers on your social media. How long have you, you know, sort of been in that sort of echelon of having a following? And how long did it take you to get there?
It took me about six months to get there.
Wow.
I've been there about three years, three and a half years, and I've been growing it steadily. I've had a baby since then and also experienced some burnout, which is why I kind of alluded to that in the beginning. Now I've kind of come back to it with this whole fresh perspective in the past year and have been growing it again. So I'm a little, I'm about at the 70,000 mark now between all the platforms that I have. And I am really enjoying this new sort of, this new way to use, to use and leverage social media.
That's so exciting. So getting back to, to growing your friends, right? Because I mean, this really is sort of at the core. I imagine this is kind of like what you did at the beginning, even with, with growing Young Living, right? Of finding new people to be communicating with that maybe aren't just your friends and family. So tell us a little bit about how you kind of approach making these new friends, you know, just from a mindset perspective. What are the sort of metrics you have in place? Do you have goals for a number of conversations you're starting? Like, what does that look like for you, for someone who's just getting started?
You know, currently, I don't because it's such a habit. Actually, I don't have metrics that I use that I go by, but initially, when I was starting out my business, and I'll also get into some further details about this and watching some of the comments here. But my goal was to comment and in at least three groups, share a valuable comment in at least three groups a day, okay? And then from there, what I would do after I made friends with them and/or new friends on Facebook specifically, there's a section where it says recently added friends. So then what I would do with those new friends is if they're, if our conversations died down or they stopped messaging me back, et cetera, I would go into the recently added section in Facebook. This is how I still do it today. And I will click on those new friends and I will go and look at their profiles and what they posted. And I will make sure that I do three likes and one comment on their recent posts, okay? What that does then is when they log into their, you know, Facebook app, they'll see those notifications and they'll see, oh, Jessica Doeman, who is that again? Oh, that's right. She's the girl that talks to me about this fantastic probiotic that made such a difference in her health, et cetera, et cetera. Right? It brings them back to the fore, it brings me back to the forefront of their minds, all right? It also allows Facebook to say, oh, you guys are friends. So I'm, I'm going to show, Facebook shows my post to this new friend I made, Sally Sue, or whatever, we'll name her. I would say, actually, a good goal, let me get back to answering your question here. A good goal is to, in at least three different Facebook groups, go in and comment every day, providing some sort of value and go into your new friends list and go ahead and do that three likes and one comment. If you have a bunch of new friends list that you add each week, that's fantastic. Might take you some more time, so you can add some parameters around there. I like to spend 10 minutes a day doing this, so commenting in groups and commenting on my new friends list. That's it. I set my timer. I'm in, I'm out. I do not allow myself to scroll. There is none of that happening. There is no time for this.
Oh, I love that. I love that. So would you say that the majority of your friend requests that you send are getting accepted?
Oh, absolutely.
Was that always the case?
Um, you know, yeah, I think so, because I do it in a way that, you know, I, you know, I'll just say like, hey, I want to send you a friend request because I've really enjoyed talking with you and I want to, you know, it's not weird, and I'll write that in the comments, okay? And no admins, I saw somebody asked that question. No admins have ever gotten back, you know, come back to me and said, you can't request to be friends, et cetera. Because I'm doing it, you can see we've had a conversation before I even say it. I'm not just randomly friend requesting people. That feels icky to me, so that's not how I handle it. But yeah, I would, yes, actually, yeah, and I know, when you get to a certain point, you can turn on the follow within your Facebook. I'm almost at my max Facebook friends, so sometimes I'll, people can actually follow me, et cetera, which has been a great way to connect as well.
I love it. I love it. And you know, you mentioned before burnout, right? I think that, maybe just a quick show of hands, how many of you guys have maybe tried using social media to grow Young Living, to get new leads, and you have felt burnt out by doing it? Jess, can you speak a little bit to sort of what it looked like for you when you were feeling burnt out, right? Because you became, like, you hit gold, like, you're successful, right? But you felt burnt out. What did you do? Like, what were sort of the main shifts that you made to switch from burnout and into this, this place where you really feel good and excited about what you're doing?
It was a total mindset shift. I had, you know, sort of a realization in my business and in myself, how I was looking at social media, right? I was looking at it as a time suck and just like, oh, I have no good content to create, you know? And I was comparing myself to some other influencers, larger influencers, like, why can I have all these followers like they have, et cetera? Which is something I run into daily, which let me just address that quickly, if that's you, you're comparing. That does no good. Comparison is the thief of all joy. And it doesn't matter how many followers you have, frankly, it's a vanity metric unless they're engaged followers, right? Unless you're selling Young Living to them and they're buying from you, doesn't matter if you have 100,000 followers. So I really had to reframe my mind about, you know, did I want my business to be on social media? Did I want to continue to share Young Living on social media? Or did I want to get in the car and leave my home and my kids, you know, a couple days a week to teach classes? And it was the former for me. I didn't want to have to go out and about, right? Remember, I said, I like to sit on my couch. And so, you know, the ladder getting in my car didn't allow me to do that. So I just had to really reframe my mind and start looking and seeing social media as what it was. And if this is you right now, get into the Get Oil and Facebook group, because I did a great video on this earlier about, on Tuesday, about reframing your mind and how you're talking to yourself about social media. If you're saying, listen to yourself, those little voices in your head, and how you're feeling about when you talk about social media. If you're feeling like icky about it or that it's taking too much time, I invite you to reframe that and start saying however you want social media to be. So for me, actually, I was saying to myself, social media is fun and easy. And I'm talking to my ideal clients daily and I'm signing up one to two members a week. And after time, I came back with that renewed energy. And my business came back again. I started selling again and, and I've grown it since then. So it's been, it's been really incredible.
Awesome. So your mindset made it real. All right, so big question, elephant in the room, how often are you posting about Young Living? Or are you posting ever explicitly about Young Living?
That's a great question. I do post about Young Living, but not near as much as I used to. I've taken a few trainings, Martha's is one of them, and really have taken a different perspective on how I share my love of Young Living. I will occasionally post, but not often. Previously, I was doing, you know, probably two or three posts a week, Young Living focused. And now it's more about generating curiosity, right? Which Martha teaches all about this, where you're not showing your product, you're talking about the benefits from it, right? And now I actually, I alluded to the mindset piece right there, but I'm doing a lot more of that in working with moms from the mindset perspective and also using Young Living products in coordination with that. So, and that I've actually seen much better success and results with than saying, hey, here's this product that I use, go ahead and buy it, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So thinking back to when you used to post about Young Living promotionally more frequently and sort of where you are now, did you, I don't know, did you go back and like change anything on your past posts? Or like, when you decided to kind of visit this with a fresh perspective, what changes did you make on your profile itself?
That's great. And I'm so excited you asked me those questions because next week, starting on Monday in particular, I'm launching this free five-day challenge. It's called the Social Makeover. And I'm going to be teaching you, I'm going to get to give you one step each day. So you're going to get five tips about really reframing your bio, which is so important for growing your following on social media, talking to your ideal customers. There's a ton of research out there that shows you have three seconds, y'all, to get somebody's attention, to get them to click the follow or the add friend button. And your bio is so important to doing that. So next week, your bio is one of the things I'm going to teach you guys how you want it to be set up in order to be successful. So actually, setting up my bio is one of the many things that I did to, to really start attracting my ideal clients and customers.
I love it. So let's, let's talk a little bit about this challenge, you guys. And Jess, kind of walk us through what you're going to be, and actually, if you want, we can like screen share and show everybody the page where they can go sign up. And I want to give some time for you to answer some of the Q and A that's here as well.
Great.
Yeah, here, hold on just a second. I'm going to share this. So guys, if you go to modernsocialmama.com, you are going to land on, give me a second, I'm going to share this with you, this pretty page, where you can learn all about this challenge and sign yourself up for free, five-day challenge. So Jess, tell us a little bit about what you're going to be going over in the coming week. What's the experience going to be like? Tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Yeah, so I'll just say, this was created, you guys, out of the burnout that I experienced. This was all, and this was also created because I'm a busy mom and I don't subscribe to the whole, you know, the whole you don't have time to play with your kids because you're too busy working your business. Those are the parameters I set for myself when I came back. And I needed to prove to myself that I could work my business on social media in only three hours a week. And so this challenge is showing you the basic steps and getting you set up so you can further, you know, grow your following and your business on social media. So first and foremost, we're going to talk about mindset. I alluded to that already today. And then earlier, if you saw my video in the Get Oil and Facebook group, I talked about mindset, we're going to reframe your mind. We're going to give you a cleanup, okay, on day two, Ashley's showing it here, day two is a quick cleanup of, you know, of your current bios, of your current feed, what it looks like, all of that, okay? Because the last thing you want is somebody to come to your page and they do a quick scroll and they're like, oh, yeah, she sells Young Living! And it's all over every single day. And then three, day three, you guys, is your bio. We alluded to that. Again, you have three seconds to capture someone. So there's a really quick, easy formula that I use to update your bio. So when people go to your page, they can see you and they can click follow or add as a friend. Day four, we're going to talk about making it stunning. So there used to be a big, well, there is still a misconception that on Instagram specifically, you have to have a really pretty curated feed, it has to be pretty photos, all of this. And it doesn't, not every single day, okay? But it, pretty photos are more eye-catching on both Facebook and Instagram. So I'm teaching you guys about how to make pretty photos, okay, what that looks like. And then lastly, day five is all about branding it. So you're going to really get creative and come with your own brand words. And that's what you're actually going to use to create content. It's a really, really easy way to create content, y'all. I sit down and create a month's worth of content in an hour, okay? And I want to teach you guys how to do the same thing. It's super easy. So these are the steps that you're going to take initially to help get you started to having a fantastic bio and start attracting your ideal clients and customers.
I love it. I love it. This is so exciting. So you guys, for those of you who are asking how you can follow Jess, head over to modernsocialmama.com. You'll see her links down here in the footer. And then make sure to sign yourself up, you guys. This is going to launch on Monday. It's totally free, five days. You're going to have a Facebook group where you guys are active, right? Are you going to be doing some profile reviews, right?
Yes, yes, for sure. So and actually, I'm going to pick somebody, somebody here that's watching, that's commented, asked me a question or has, has shared something in the, in the comments here on Zoom. I'm going to pick one of you, too. We're going to pick one of you. And I'm going to review your profile. And we're going to talk one-on-one, you and I, we're going to review your profile on both Facebook and Instagram. And I'm going to give you some tips to get moving forward. And then, yes, I am also going to pick three people who sign up for the challenge next week. We're going to meet one-on-one, and we're going to do the same thing, okay, you guys? I, this is my way of taking you from unsure what to post, unsure of how to talk to your ideal client, burnt out, don't know how to use social media, to having the freedom of doing social media on your own terms, okay?
I love it. This is so, so, so exciting. You guys, get over here, modernsocialmama.com. Sign up for this challenge. It's a really simple daily action steps. And if you're doing them, you have a chance of having expert eyes on your profile with insights. And guys, I mean, even if you don't get a live profile review from start to finish, you're changing your mindset. You're giving yourself a makeover and you're setting yourself up on the path to know exactly what to show up and talk about, like, on an ongoing basis, so that you can spend this just three hours a week like Jess does, which I think is just so, so, so cool. So, oh, I love it. So there's a lot happening in the comments here, so I want to be able to flip over there and have you be able to answer some of these. I saw a comment earlier, further, further, way further up in the chat about the switch from becoming a content consumer to becoming a content creator. And I think that that is a real key sticking point for you, isn't it?
Totally. Absolutely, it is. Absolutely, it is. And I can't remember, somebody had posted something, somebody I follow, about to stop, you know, stop, yeah, stop consuming, right, start creating. What is it that lights you up on fire? Because we all know, right, your ideal clients and customers, they share those similar things that light you up on fire. So just like, you know, you never want to copy anybody else's content and/or if you ever have or if you ever do, it won't go over well. It's not in your voice, right? And you're, you're not creating your own content. So absolutely, absolutely, creating your own content is where it's at. That's when you get the best engagement.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. All right. So here's a question from Astraea Cruz. Do you have one Facebook page for your business and one for personal?
I do. Yes, I do. I have a pretty large following on a Facebook business page. I'm going to caveat that, okay? So I share with you guys, that was roughly three, three years ago that I started that. And now it has a very large following, which, which I won't be doing away with. But if you, I would not recommend that you have a business page, okay? It's a time suck. It's one other thing to post content to, right? And you, and it's not a good idea to post the exact same content in all of the same places. So if you don't have one already, I wouldn't recommend that you start a new one, okay? Because people want to get to know you, and oftentimes, the business page puts another layer between you and your customer, which isn't, isn't what we're about in Young Living.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And unless you're going to be running ads, it's just not a good use of your time. But in terms of like your profile, though, if we're talking about like where you're showing up and posting content, you have one profile that you use this for, right? And you do everything with it, or no?
Yep, so I have one profile on Facebook and then one on Instagram.
Okay, so this is just one thing. So you don't, you're not managing two separate profiles?
No.
That's a huge part of why this doesn't take too much time for you, I'm sure. All right, Jen would like an example of a curiosity post. So what would, like, if you could describe what that could be?
Sure. Okay, so I've alluded to this, but my target market, my ideal clients are moms. So a curiosity post would be, this is totally off the top of my head. I've shared this with you, Ashley, so you feel free to fill in the words, anything I missed here. But I used to be the mom who got woken up every morning by the mommy alarm clock. So a kid crying or screaming and I would jump out of bed, ready to take care of somebody else, never having any time for myself. And now I wake up every morning to my alarm clock, which allows me to have a hot cup of coffee after and to allow me to have some time for myself in the morning to exercise, to move my body and to meditate and to wake my kids up with a smile on my face. And I have done this by integrating one of the easiest, simplest steps. And every mom should know how to do this. If you don't have peace in your mornings, you really should, mama, and talk to me if you want this step.
How many of you guys are super curious about what she's talking about now? I'm super curious. I also know that you can go to the MamaVault.com and find out what the answer is.
You can, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Jess has an answer for that, too. So good, right, right? All right, hey, just FYI, you guys, you're in the chat. I see questions coming in there. There's a lot going in there. Please make sure if you have a question that you would like for Jess or someone on our team to answer, that you put it into the Q and A. All right, Suzanne asks, how many times a week do you post about Young Living? You touched a little bit on that, but I guess if we could put a pin in it.
Yes, let's put a pin in it. Thank you for asking that. So I would say, on average, probably once a week with a Young Living product, maybe. I do allude to Young Living products. I just don't ever say them or show a picture of them, right? It might be, I might say something about, you know, more of a curiosity, right? That I have one cleaner under my sink. That's totally fine if my kids get into, that's a Young Living product without saying and showing it's a Young Living product.
Okay, so you're talking about Young Living frequently. You're just not saying Young Living or you're not promoting?
No, I'm not.
Okay, big difference, big difference. Because what you're doing is, right, you're showing up and you're talking about what they want to talk about, right? And letting them come to you when they're ready to move to that next step in the conversation.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm talking to them about what they want, right? So what are they getting that, you know, my kids, I don't have to worry when I turn my back that my two-year-old is under my sink because I know, fine, go ahead and spill that all over the floor. It's not going to hurt you, you know? That's what, you know, everybody wants that peace of mind. So I'm selling that, if you will, right, instead of these cleaner.
Oh, I love it. That's so cool. All right, Amelia says, my biggest question is how to manage multiple things. I'm a raindrop specialist and also help people with Young Living. Well, Jess, you, you offer multiple things, right? Like, you have things of your own creation, you're an affiliate, like, you obviously have a Young Living business. So how are you able to kind of manage multiple things with this one strategy?
You know, it works, it works the same, right? Because I would say being a raindrop, which, good for you, I need a good raindrop. Thanks for the reminder. I would say raindrop is, you know, you're obviously passionate about helping people. I don't want to put words into your mouth, right? But so talk to people from that perspective, how you help them, you know, deal with, you know, detoxing and feeling better and emotions that come out of raindrop, all those things that they experience, right? detoxing and feeling better and emotions that come out of raindrop, all those things that they experience, right? Without, and you could say in terms of massage, right? You, um, and then not necessarily call it a raindrop until they ask you further specifics about it, right? And not necessarily promote Young Living, right? Maybe your stance from a larger perspective is, you know, healthy living. And here is how you create that. You eat real healthy foods, you get this massage, you know, once a week or twice a week, whatever that could be. And it's helped you do, you now experience X, Y, Z because of this. And then you let people ask about it, right? It's that whole, it's that whole curiosity of it. When people come to you, because people want to be healthy, right? If that's what you're selling, who doesn't?
I love it. And remember, guys, you remember how Jess just told a story, we were talking about that curiosity post? And she told the story about how she used to feel when she woke up to the baby alarm clock and now she has the mama alarm clock. Right? Think about a story about how what you do, whether it's Young Living or something else, like think about a story you can tell that she's going to relate to. Tell that and then have her go, oh, but what is it? What is it? What is it? How, give me the thing, right? That's where people start begging for information, right? And that's, isn't that the result that you get from this, Jess? Where people are actually showing up in your, in your DMs? This isn't just you are sending a friend request and telling them where you're going to send them a friend request. They're coming to you and they're saying, okay, tell me more. I'm like, I want to know, right? Like, tell me about that.
Yeah, and you know, Ashley, I'll just take this minute and tell you guys, because I promised you in the beginning, I told you how I make friends on Facebook. Let me just tell you quickly how I make them on Instagram. And then I'm going to share a story with you guys on a DM that I got just yesterday about it. So on Instagram, I make friends by looking up the hashtags really easily, so that my ideal customer client would be using. So, you know, motherhood or stress and motherhood, something like that. And I will go in under those hashtags and I'll comment on those people's posts who have tagged, who have used those hashtags, okay? Three likes, one comment works the same way. Okay, you guys, I'll even click follow on them. When you follow someone on Instagram, they likely want to follow you back. All right. And then I'll just keep that same thing works, three likes and one comment. When, when I follow somebody, you, I'll make a list of them. Use my good oiling system that Ashley's helped me with, to be able to remind myself to follow up with people. So it works the same way. So somebody that I just, it was over the weekend, maybe when I was doing this, I had just recently followed her. Okay, and I'd done my whole, you know, strategy, I just share with you the three likes and one comment. And she sent me a message yesterday and I had shared on my stories all about Modern Social Mama, which we're talking about today. And she's also in business and said like, oh my goodness, how do you do that? And I see your kids are in the background, like how are they behaving? You know, I need to know your tips and tricks, right? I don't know her. I've never talked to her. We just made, I just followed her over the weekend. And that's what it's about, you guys, is just that attraction marketing that's so authentically you that people just flock to.
Awesome. All right, so Camille is asking, and I've definitely seen this question before. She says, I'm struggling with knowing what to put in my profile for my job. Just lost my job currently, I said it as entrepreneur, or could I just hide that? Like, how important is it to show your job in your profiler? What do you do for yours? Do this job?
I, I don't, I say, I think more important than listing a job is what you offer, right? Like, what are you passionate about? So, um, and it's a little different in Facebook and a little different in Instagram. So join me for the social makeover next week, the free one. Um, that are free challenge and I'm going to tell you how to do your Instagram bio and your Facebook bio. But what I will tell you with, tell you right now is more importantly than listing your job, if you will, is what, what you're into, what you offer and what your testimonials might be. Okay, so I think mine says, working mom hack expert. Yes, girl, you can live the life you want. And then there's a link, okay, for them to click and find out more information. So something like that, that fits you. Okay, so maybe you're going back to the Young Living example, maybe it's, you know, living your best life in wellness, in natural wellness or something like that. Say that, okay? And then link them from there. I know Ashley just shared last week, she helped create my linked page. So make sure you have a link, thank you, Ashley, to share that they can also, they can also click and learn more information. We have to add Modern Social Mama in there, Ashley, I added that to.
We do, we do need to get this rebranded to those bright, beautiful colors too. Awesome, awesome, you guys, so many good questions here today. Holly asks, how do you balance that three hours on social with your own personal social and consuming by engaging with friends, you know, like non-Young Living? Like, you know, what your cousin is up to, that's not part of your team. Like, how do you balance or do you, do you categorize that differently?
I really don't. I, I don't, I don't have a parameter in that. I, I certainly do, you know, sometimes at night, right? I am, I am scrolling. But I set limits on that, like it might be five minutes while, you know, my husband's putting the boys to bed and then when he comes out, I'm off. Whatever that could be, right? I would, whatever that is for you, and some people use it as relaxed time, that's okay. If you'd rather scroll than read or take a bath or whatever, whatever your thing is, that's okay. But set parameters around it so you don't find yourself wasting time and how you do it.
Yeah, I think schedule blocking is, I mean, that's something that I teach that is just a huge piece of that. And guys, just get you one of these. When it's work time, just use one of these. Set your 10 minutes, do your thing. And then if you've got your free time, then yeah, go see what your cousin's up to. All right, do you do classes or do most of your enrollments come from those one-on-one conversations?
Yeah, I, I don't really do classes. I did, when I was first starting out, I would do online classes on Facebook. I, I don't get great, great responses in doing that. I do a lot better, more one-on-one. So I would say, you know, know your strengths, right? For me, it's talking to people one-on-one. And a big tip, I'll leave you guys, instead of always, Instagram has it too. I will voice message people a lot because I like to talk. I'm sure you can't tell that. But I like to talk and I can talk way quicker than I can type. And I'm, everyone's busy, right? So use that to talk to people and then they can hear, you know, the highs and lows in your voice, your authenticity, all of that, which you can't pick up when you're typing.
Oh, I love that. And if you're old school like me, because this is like what Jess is talking about, I totally used to do this. We didn't, Facebook didn't have the voice message back then. I would say, hey, I like to be real friends with my Facebook friends. Here's my number, let's talk. And we, I would use that to get on the phone. And then, of course, once we're on the phone, we're moving into a conversation where they get closed into the deal, right? So guys, use the voice feature, that's huge. All right, Rebecca says, just registered, I've been feeling really compelled to up my game on social, but keeping, but keep getting hung up on the how. Do you have the same thoughts on Instagram as Facebook? Is it best to have a personal and a team slash business one or combine it all together? I feel like I keep seeing conflicting opinions on that.
You know, and, and there are conflicting opinions. Everything that I'm going to teach you guys is for anybody that has less than 10,000 followers, okay? If you are bigger than 10,000 followers, you're in a whole different space, okay? Because Instagram and Facebook favor you, okay? And that means they, and by favoring, I mean, that means they show your posts to more people. You don't necessarily have to do anything about it. That's just how the game works, y'all. So for those of us, for those of you under 10,000 followers, you're gonna, that's what I teach you and that's what we focus on, okay? And again, for time's sake, I only recommend, you know, again, I have an Instagram profile and then I have a Facebook profile. And because we are selling ourselves and our brand, right? Like, yes, we're selling Young Living, people want to get to know us, right? And people want to be heard. And when you have two, when you're too far removed from your customer by too many profiles or then people don't feel that, right? They want to know that you know their kids' names are John and Suzie or whatever. So you can comment on them. When you put too many layers between that, people, you lose that connection. And then they might as well buy from Target.
There you go. And the relationships are the duplicable part of this whole thing, right? So you need one-on-one, it needs to be you. All right, oh, that one, I just, okay, so where did, I lost that one. Okay, so when you make the curiosity posts, this is from Camille. When you make the curiosity posts, do you DM those who ask questions on the post? And how do you respond?
So, unpacked. You actually want to respond to every single comment on any of your, any of your posts, okay? That tells them that you're engaged, that you're reading the comments. It also helps boost the algorithm, right? So more people see your post. So make sure you're responding to all comments, you guys. What I will say is if I wanted to get further into DM, I will tell them that. Like, I'll respond to their question and then I'll say, and hey, by the way, I'm going to message you for more information. So this doesn't get too lengthy or just so I can share a personal story with you or just so we can get a little bit more personal in the DMs or whatever. I'll say that, so I call the elephant. And that also allows anybody that's scrolling through and reading the comments, because a lot of people read your comments, y'all. It allows them to say like, oh, okay, she did respond to that and she told them further in something else. And it does create that connection too, right? Yeah, and I, I find that's what, that's what works best.
Jen says, so no photos of Young Living product? People just Google it or go to Amazon instead of coming for you to the, coming to you for the solution, right?
For sure, yes. And Martha Creachy taught me that and that has been huge for me. That's not how I was originally taught, is you want to create, yeah, that, that curiosity, you guys. And so, no, I don't often, in my posts, I don't share. In my stories, I do share Young Living products. That's different than being on your feed all the time, right? And just sharing Young Living posts.
Awesome. Rebecca asks, when you post to Instagram, do you share that post to your personal Facebook page? Or do you share different pieces of content?
It depends. Usually it's very similar content, sometimes with a different picture. Or sometimes it's the same, just kind of depends on what I've slated, what makes sense for the week in, you know, the month, the theme that I'm going for, all of that. Don't get caught up, I will tell you this, though, don't get caught up. If you are just getting into this or if you're just trying to reframe your mind on social media, again, you should join my free challenge next week. But in addition to that, don't stress yourself out with thinking like, oh, I have to have two different types of content on each platform. That's not what it's about. Initially, it's about just, you know, getting your content out there for your ideal clients and customers to see. Okay, it doesn't need to be, social media is not this big convoluted, messy thing that people make it out to be, is really fun and really easy. There's just a couple tips and tricks and tweaks that maybe y'all need to do until you start filling your DMs with, you know, tons of people that want to buy your product.
Love it, love it. So Shashana had a couple of questions, when have you created any paid courses? And that's a yes. Yes, and then she also asked if you had any experience with Clubhouse? Are you using any of the newer social platforms?
Yes, I am on Clubhouse, yes. I like it. I know everyone is saying, you know, what's the next big thing? I'm not so sure that it is for me because I like to do video. I like to see people. And, you know, Clubhouse isn't like that, like where you, you know, in the stories on Facebook and Instagram, you can see people. So I don't know. I am on it, you guys can totally look me up on it, it's Jessica Doman. But, but we'll see.
Okay.
The verdict is still out on it. I haven't made any sales on Clubhouse. That's probably what you're, what you're kind of wondering too. I haven't made any sales on Clubhouse.
But you've made a lot on Instagram and Facebook. A lot.
The other thing for me, right, um, is if it's not broke, don't fix it. So it's like, well, this is for me, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially if you've got it down to a formula where you can get it done in that amount of time. And listen, like, there's, there's a lot of new social media platforms that are out there right now. And if they excite you and you're engaged by them, by all means, like, take what Jess teaches, it's going to work anywhere because every social platform has an algorithm, right? And, and the mechanism of attraction marketing that she teaches and what she's going to be setting you up for with this challenge is literally going to work anywhere you plug it in, right? But know that like where most people are hanging out are these great big platforms like Facebook and Instagram. And it would be wise to do some of what she's doing there. I mean, there's, you know, proof positive, she can get to, you know, 65,000 followers in six months and then manage this whole thing in three hours a day with two little kids running around the house. I, I want to do what Jess is doing. I hope you guys do too. All right, Amelia is asking, hi Amelia, how many reels do you do in a day or a week?
Yes, so I'm having a lot of fun with those recently. There's a lot, I've been playing with that. And the sweet spot in there for growth, I have found, is about three or four a week that I've been doing.
Awesome. All right, we got just a couple more. I do have two people who are patiently waiting for website reviews. Actually, if you're here, just one second, real quick, let me make sure that you are here. If you're here for a website review today and, and you signed up for it, so that would be Carrie or Carrie, sorry if I'm butchering your name, as well as Sharon May. If you guys are here, make sure you raise your hand for me so that I'm able to find you once it's time. All right, Carrie, if you're here, please raise your hand as well. Perfect, you're both here, awesome. So I want to honor you guys waiting. So we do have just a few more questions. By the way, you guys, we're going to have Jess back next week. We're going to talk about how this challenge has been going. And then we might have her back again after that because we just, we need more of this, don't we? Don't we need more of this, you guys? All right, so we're going to go through just a few more questions here. And guys, make sure, modernsocialmama.com. You're going to get access to a group that Jess has, you're going to, when this vault releases on Monday, you're going to get, or actually on Sunday, you're going to get access to it the day before. And, and you guys are going to be able to ask questions and all that kind of stuff there too. So get excited, it's free, it's five days, it's next week, it's live. Modernsocialmama.com, please sign up. You're going to love that you did. All right, so Judy, Julie asks, do you find that these systems are duplicating down your team? Are, are they, you know, teaching classes or are they doing more attraction marketing?
Yeah, they, yes, it is duplicating down my team. We're definitely doing more attraction marketing. You know, again, everybody is different, right? So I do have some people on my team, absolutely, that like to get out and like to touch people and go to their homes and give hugs. And when I say touch people, that's what I mean, give hugs, see them in person, right? Versus the, you know, one-on-one talking on the phone. And I encourage, everybody is different and that's okay. Just because I built my business this way and that's what worked for me, doesn't mean it's going to work for everybody in my team. But I, my team is certainly heavily social media focused. That starts from my upline all the way down. It's worked for all of us, it's worked for me. And so that's what I teach them, but they also have my support, absolutely, to go out and do things in person.
Excellent, excellent. And the thing is, guys, for those of you, and there was another question, do you teach duplication? What Jess is teaching here is absolutely duplicable. It's completely uncomplicated and it's wholly based around building a relationship and setting yourself up as someone who cares about someone else enough to have a conversation and to help them. There is nothing in this business more duplicable than that, like nothing. It's literally nothing. So Jess, did you develop your following organically? Did you ever like pay for ads, like, tell us about that?
I have, yes, it was very organically. I have paid for a few ads and I, I don't know what I'm doing on ads, not recently, not in the past two years, I haven't. Right shortly after I got to right about 55,000 followers, I did do some ads on my business page. Again, a business page is the only place where you can do ads, right? But I don't, I didn't know what I was doing and I never really gained any more followers from it. I might've sold a couple kits, but that was it. And I haven't done anything since. I think it's a, unless you know what you're doing, I think it's a waste of money. And frankly, for the business that we're in in Young Living, people want to buy us, not necessarily, you know, they do want the products, but, but they don't, they don't, they want us first, right? And then they buy the products because of it. And it was not going to give you that.
Yeah, without a doubt. It's, it's one thing to put yourself out there and brand yourself as a serious business person and have a page that takes up that space, but it's really not a tool for a network marketer beyond that, right? Like, it's just a place to dump money and time. All right, Wendy asks, how much time do you spend a week creating content and videos?
So I, I stick really firm to my three hours a week on social media and I'd create content. So all of my posts in one hour, I set my timer. Here's the thing, work expands to the time we allow it, right? So one hour, all of my posts are done for the, for the month. And that's on both Facebook and Instagram. And then from there, I do live videos at least three a week on Facebook. A lot of those I'll also post to IGTV on Instagram. And then my reels, you guys, those are my fun things. So I know I told you my sweet spot is three to four reels a week. Those don't take me long to make and they're really fun for me. Those don't take me long to make and they're really fun for me. So I don't count that in my three hours a week. Um, because it's fun for me and it's something new. Um, so I, I might spend thirty minutes a week doing reels, maybe not even that much. Um, and that, that includes probably some scrolling time, scrolling to see like what some funny ones other people have done that I might want to, you know, I might want to do something similar myself.
I love it. I love it. Thank you so much for sharing that. You guys, thank you for all of the amazing questions. And Jess, you're free to, if you want to keep hanging out, you want to answer questions as they come in, you're welcome to. Really appreciate you taking the time and spending it with us today.
Thank you so much for having me, guys. I'm so excited for this. Thank you, Ashley, for your work and helping me bring all this together for the social makeover for the challenge next week. Um, I'm so looking forward to it. And thanks, you guys, for allowing me to share my knowledge with you. Um, and yeah, I'll hang out. Actually, I'll respond to some questions in the comments and just listen.
Love it, love it. You guys, if you haven't done it yet, modernsocialmama.com, go sign up for this. It's going to be so much fun. And you're going to come out of this with a makeover, ready to go make those new friends who are going to see your profile and be like, yeah, I want that person in my life. I want to know more about what they do and have them reaching out and asking you how they can learn more about what you do. Cause that's exactly what we want, right? Awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jess. All right. So I would like to invite out, uh, da-da-da, here's your site, Carrie. Raise, let me see, raise your hand for me again, real quick, Carrie, and I'm going to bring you out to chat. Hello?
Hi.
Hi, good to have you. All right. Tell me, uh, tell me a little bit about what you are looking to learn today.
Well, I talked to you a while back. Um, I went by Good Nature or, or Good, what was it? Something about oils and it sounded too store-like.
Okay.
So, um, it changed my name to kind of sound more like a blog.
Okay. I like it.
It just got out of, um, Richard Brooks Masterclass. And he gave me a whole bunch of content. And I'm like, what to do with it? So, yeah, my website.
All right. So what, what kind of, what kind of content did you get from him? Is it like this one? Oh, I know this one.
Yeah.
Love it. Love it, love it. So, um, I actually really recommend, um, there's a way to, um, depending on your browser, this may vary, but you can, um, you can actually embed, if you look at Colette's page, we have that same video and she's a, a Richard Brook client as well. We've actually got that on a page where we're then offering a one-on-one class. Um, so you can send people there and then actually give them a next step, just if you wanted to use it that way. That is, that is one way. I've seen some of his content utilized, um, on the platform. Yeah.
Yeah, I was actually in class with her.
Awesome. Yeah, she's, she's a, just a great resource. So I see you've got, um, you, yeah, this is great. I like what you're doing here. Tell me about, um, do you have, let's say we've got a blog here.
Oh, I've only done one blog.
I see. So you do, you also, you want to make sure, because right now you've got a dropdown menu that's happening under your blog. So you're going to want to remove those items from beneath the blog because it's going to be a little confusing, right? Because home and my page and these, these aren't necessarily blog related. So you, you do want to make sure that you kind of organize the menu items so that they are, you know, so, so the blog one goes to the blog. And then what is this one? Who are we? Oh. Yeah, there's another cool one that you could use. You could put, put that into a get oiling page, like Colette did.
Yeah, I don't know if I should make these all into the landing pages so people can contact me after they watch them or just leave them like this or not have them on there at all.
Well, so there's a couple of options. And actually, this comes to mind. So Jess, uh, Jess actually has a page on her site that just talks about Young Living oils, right? Uh, and so, and she actually has another one that goes, uh, to talk about, oh wait, no, it's an order one. If you want to learn about a business, go here. So she's got like a whole story about why you want a business and all this kind of stuff. And a lot of this is content that you could borrow. Like if you are a Grow Workspace subscriber, you can get this kind of copy from there. Um, and put this into a page. And then that's a really great place for you to grab. Where did that go? I lost it. Um, this, um, brand partnership, this video would be a great fit for a page like this where you have all of this Young Living information and income disclosure statement, what it means to be a member and what it means to be a brand partner. Or at least, you know, what is a customer and a brand partner and so on. Um, and she's got like a comp plan video here. So I would, I would recommend maybe looking at, um, not just having the resource there, but thinking about how you would use the resource in a conversation. So if you're having a, you know, a conversation with someone about, um, about starting a business, then maybe the link here is start a business, right? Um, and then you've got a page where you're talking about why you started a business, how you chose to go about doing that and choosing Young Living. And then you can add in that Richard Brook resource, or really any other resources that you would want to have on that page. And then what you can do when you are talking to someone on social media and the DMs or wherever, um, in person, you can say, hey, if you go over to essentiallymotherhood.com and, and click on, um, and click on start a business, then you can learn all about why I chose what I did and get all of that information, you know? And, and then you can actually point them in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, this is cute. Excellent. So, um, so yeah, one thing that I would recommend that you consider doing is, is sort of consolidating as well, right? Because right here on the business, we've got, okay, we've got the opportunity page. That's good. And then we've got, I think these are probably Richard Brook resources. Oh, there's your member area.
I, um, am not good at, I wasn't sure if I should put something in the, the member area. I know some lady said they put it in their vault and I was like, I don't know how to do that. So I'm just going to do it this way.
Yeah. So, um, so yeah, I, again, I would just look at this as when you meet someone, just say right now, if you're on social media, you meet someone. Um, you're going to have a conversation and it's going to wind up going in one of, let's just say, four directions. One, a direction is they know that you work from home and they want to know about the business that you have. And so you can have a page, um, or a menu with a, a handful of pages that provide that information. Maybe the other lane that might be chosen there is around wellness, specifically the products you use and recommend. And you could have a menu, again, like a menu where there's like a dropdown here that could point to those resources, including like that, what's under your sink for Richard Brook? Uh, and so on. Maybe another one is, you know, they're not necessarily oily focused or business focused. Um, but you're a mom and you're out there sharing insights on, on motherhood and they'd be interested in, you know, getting updates from your blog. And so maybe you have a learn menu, uh, where people can see where your upcoming classes are, if you have them, uh, or, you know, have the blog there. And, and so it's kind of clean in that way. Here, let me show you real quick, going, just talking about Colette's again. We have on hers, there's a learn menu where this learn about essential oils is that page that I showed you earlier, this one here. Uh, but under learn, she also has, um, she's got a landing page here where people can sign up for live training that she does on a regular basis. She also has her events that she does and get oiling. And then of course, there's a member area as well for members. And so now we've kind of got this, I mean, this, and under work with me, it's just book an appointment because she has an appointment booking page. This could simply be contact with the hashtag contact, which you know how to use because you put it here under questions. Um, so, so yeah, I, I would consider consolidating just a little bit, um, and cleaning that up so that the navigation is a little easier.
Okay. Yeah, I was up till like two in the morning, my time. I think that's like five year time, just putting everything together. So it's, it's still a work in progress.
Absolutely. All the worries are.
I stopped because of the changes we're going to have. And I was thinking, well, maybe I should just, you know, have the, they're going to give us, you know, our new link where we can enroll with anything. And, you know, I've been listening to so many people say, don't show Young Living on Instagram, but then a lot of people do. And so I'm kind of like, I'm trying to figure out what works for me right now. So that's why it's kind of wishy-washy on the website.
I think, I, I, I think honestly, uh, what you can do is, um, you know, show up talking to the person that you want to be having a conversation with. And then let them know, hey, if you want to do this, go here. If you want to do that, go there. And let them kind of choose what that direction is. Um, this is, um, just to continue shouting Jess out here. Um, she's got this here as well. Oh, you did some work, honey. I didn't know you did that. This looks really good. Okay. Yeah, it really, really does. Um, all right. So, so Jess is showing up here. She's got the Unjudged Mama Project. You guys, when you sign up for the challenge, you're going to learn about that Facebook group and learn how you can join it if it's the fit for you. Um, but this is, um, you know, she's got a message that's straight to her person. And then you could go off and learn about her and learn her story. Right? So we're, we're giving, we're giving them options. So it's, think about it like this. Someone goes to your website. You're starting a conversation and you're giving them options as to where they want that conversation to go. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that, that I think could help, um, make this feel a little less overwhelming. Because basically all you want to do is say, okay, I want them to show up and know that I'm here for them in this way. And here are three ways that they can pursue more information and let's give those clear lanes, uh, so that they can move through them. Um, and that, you know, will also kind of, you know, it'll clean everything up visually. And, um, and I think it'll feel like, it'll feel good and in flow for you because you know that you're directing towards specific types of conversations that you know you want to be having. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Awesome. I love it. And then you've got, um, oh, wow. You have other, these are also menu items.
Yes.
Oh.
Actually figured out how to link those last night and,
Oh.
Um, like it just shows you, I don't know if I should leave how network marketing works. You know, the way Richard teaches is a little bit different from, for example, Martha's Go for Gold, where you want to, you know, cover it up and get their contact information and then have a conversation. He teaches us to just be straight to the point. And so that's where I'm like kind of pulling two ways, like, hmm, which one is going to work for me?
Well, so he's, he's a hundred percent right. Once you're in the conversation with somebody. Once somebody has said, I want to know more about what you do, you don't keep the cat in the bag there. Um, but what Martha and what Jess and, uh, and even what I've taught is, is that, you know, we want to provide them enough of a reason to want to reach out to you. Right? Whether that's on your social or on your profiles. We want to, you know, we want to show just enough. Um, and give and give on from a value perspective to build trust so that they are open to a conversation. And then, yeah, once a conversation happens, then yeah, it's network marketing. I love it. With that, I don't care, right? Um, and he's, he's right about that. It's just not how you position yourself necessarily as the first impression with someone.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah. So I would, um, I would consider, because you have a lot of resources, um, that, that you're offering. Again, just sort of thinking about how you can silo those into, um, you know, helpful mom tips, healthy living and business. And sort of have those be maybe menu items. And then you can actually have maybe just the menu here and you don't even have to have this bar here. And it can just be your site menu where people can choose their own adventure there.
Okay.
Awesome. You're doing great work and I'm really proud of the work that you've done here and you should be too. This looks good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Of course, of course. Thank you for being with us today. All right. We have one more. Where did you go? Uh, we raised your hand for me and thank you so much for waiting patiently. Hi, Sharon. Let me know when, you can unmute yourself. Okay, talking permitted. So if you want to unmute yourself, Sharon, we can get to chatting. There we go. I think you did. Hi. It's okay. How's it going?
It's fine.
Great. I'm excited to have you with us today. So tell me, uh, tell me about what kind of feedback you're looking for on your site while I get it pulled up for us. There we go.
Want some tips, some from you on how to make it better.
Okay, wonderful. Let me see. All right. So I'm gonna share my screen here so we can look at what you've got. Great. Okay, there we go. All right. So I think we, we've got a built-in theme here, which is great. Um, and then did, did you, do you have, um, a custom homepage yet? Or are we, um, like, have you started working on that? Are you still here?
Yes.
Okay. Have you, have you, uh, created a custom homepage or anything like that? Or are we looking for sort of guidance on how to get started?
Guidance on that.
Okay, wonderful. So, um, so cool. So tell me then, I guess, about the person, uh, that you're really interested in starting a conversation with and, and bringing into, into your business.
I'm.
Uh-oh, I think we might not have a good connection. Okay, I think we have, we have a little bit of a connection issue. I can hear you just a little bit. You're breaking up a lot, though. Um, give me just a second. It's okay.
If you can, if you can just talk me through what you're seeing. Since our connection is bad, I can hear you fine.
Okay, wonderful. And, and, and I, I think, I think we'll be good there. All right. I, if you can give me just a second, I'm going to pull up your back office so that we can kind of walk through a couple of recommendations. Uh, and then I'll show you a couple of examples that could be, um, a good thing for you to follow. So just a second, because I cannot talk and type at the same time. All right. Pass, let me find. Okay. Okay. All right. So let's go log into your dashboard here, Sharon. And all right. So a couple of quick things. I wanted to look first, we've got like a, some numbers up here at the top. Um, so we want to make sure that we don't have that here. And I believe that would be showing up. Greg, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it, would it be here?
The number, yeah, it's usually under the website analytics field, uh, down there.
Okay.
There must be something in there. Yeah, that number that has, there's some different code that you can put in there from Google.
I see. So if we delete this, yeah, because it's outside, it's not inside of a code, right? There's no brackets encasing it. So let's save that real quick and we'll clean that up. And then, all right. So a couple of things. Let's see, we have, you do have, um, mission on a menu here, but it's going to the homepage. So we do want to make sure if you're going to be connecting like a, a page that talks about your mission, we want to make sure that it's connecting over to a, a URL that goes to that place. Let's check out our blog. I love it. You've got a couple of blog posts here. One thing that I would really recommend you do to keep your blog, oh, look, you used a really cute, this is, this is cute. I like what you did here. Um, you used one of our, um, saved replies for the blog here, which is cool. So what I would recommend that you do is consider, um, doing the same thing each time because that's going to establish, um, congruence with your brand. But then another thing importantly, and we'll go over here to, um, manage under our blog posts. What I want to recommend that you do is on all of your blog posts, um, consider using, uh, Canva uh, for your featured image. And, uh, there are right here, so twelve hundred by six thirty. If you hover over this little I here, you can, um, customize the, the dimensions of your Canva photo. Then put this image in it and then maybe have the title of your blog post in it. That way, when you share the image or it shows up in your list of blog posts, or if you wanted to use the, um, the blog post feature, um, page section template that we have for your pages, this image will show up, but it won't just show up with the image. It'll show up with a really pretty title, um, attached to it as well. But what I wanted to come here, most importantly, to talk about is using an excerpt. Because what you'll notice here is that we see most or all of the blog posts on the page and we're having to scroll through all of them. And what we want people to do, if they want to read our blog posts, we want to give them the easiest path forward to find the one that interests them most. Because they're not necessarily going to want to read the one that's on the top. They're going to want to look for something that's specifically relevant to them. So we want to make it easy for them to do that. And we can do that by having excerpts. So what I would do is just grab the first couple of sentences and copy them and then go down here to advanced options. We're going to select show excerpt and then we're just going to paste that little bit of text in there, right? And when we save that and we come back over here, this takes up a lot less space, right? So now people can choose to read more and they aren't reading through every single blog post to scroll through and see what's here. So I'd recommend first that you do that for your blog. For everybody who's watching this, please do this with your blog. Um, it makes things visually clean. And then of course, if you are using a consistent branded, like on a Canva template, pop in the image you want to use, but have used the same font and colors and everything to say what your blog post is about. Then you've got a really great way for people to scroll through and see what they want to see. So there's that. Um, all right. One other thing I was going to mention, when we go to your homepage. Oh, that's not directing to home. So we want to, let's check out your menu real quick. If we go back here, okay. So under my site settings, this is where our site menu is. And Carrie, you, you'd want to go here as well. Um, we have here home and it's, it doesn't appear to be connected to anything. So what we want to do is, let's see, okay, so this home is the website homepage and that's actually under mission. So we actually don't want that there. We want to move home down here under home. Where did it go? Did I lose it? It's not letting me do it. Can I do that, Greg? Can I drag and move?
Oh, you can't drag between sections. If you click on it, you can change the menu header.
Got you.
Yeah, it'll be like show under menu header towards the bottom there. Yeah, it'll be like, show under menu header towards the bottom there.
Okay, okay, okay.
You can pop that under a different one.
I see. So that's how we do that. So we'll save that and then save and view over here. So now mission is actually linking to your mission page on your site. There we go. And home is linking to home, which is there. And I don't think that we have that set up just yet. So let me go look real quick. So, um, so yeah, that is, I would make the same recommendation there to, um, to just kind of consider what lanes you wanna offer for people to peruse in terms of a menu and just make it as easy as possible for them to find the information that they might wanna see so that they can take you up on it. It doesn't look like you've made a custom homepage yet, which is fine. Um, I think that our built-in themes are really perfectly good for this. So let me show you real quick. Alright, this is the last thing that I wanna share with you and I'll give you an example of how this is done, uh, really nicely with, um, another one of our friends and Young Living leaders. So I love that you have shared your story here. It's a short, it's a story that needs to be shared and it's one that I think is going to impact very deeply the people who take the time to read it. Here's the thing, we are psychologically disinclined to read things that look like work. And when you have a whole lot of text, our little lizard brain says, nope. And even if it's relevant and important. So what I would encourage you to do is think about how this can be broken up into a new place where you can kind of give the most compelling, uh, sort of statement that you wanna share to say, you know, this is kind of what my journey looked like and why you should keep reading. And then it says, read more. So let me show you real quick what that looks like. So I'll go to Jackie's site and we'll go to her blog where you can see similarly the story. Oh, and by the way, here's an example. Jackie makes these images in Canva. She's using the excerpt option here, right? So it's really easy to scroll through and see more stuff. Alright, so here we go. This is the same on Jackie's site as you can see here. The differences, and, and this is gonna show up on Jackie's built-in themes on her events page and on her blog page like you see here. So she begins this conversation, sharing a little bit of information. And then she says, it took some doing to get here and the road wasn't always easy. Read more. So the next thing I would really recommend that you do, Sharon, is to create an about me page where people who wanna see the whole story can actually come over and get the whole story, right? And you can tell the story. You see how what we've done here on Jackie's page is we actually break this up where we ask questions or we find the inflection points and we wanna create a visual focus with them cuz it keeps the eye moving. If you've ever read a really long article in a magazine, you'll see this same tactic used. Well, where they'll take a quote of text and make it larger or bolder, a different color. It'll be highlighted. There's something visual happening with it because they're doing that to keep our super unfocused brains engaged. And you wanna leverage that same kind of intelligence here as you've put your site together and it also makes it pretty and interesting, right? So, um, so yeah, that's, that's what I would highly recommend that you consider doing um, is giving your story the place that it really deserves to shine by building an about me page. And then of course, from that page, you can offer to bring people into a lead group if you have one, to head over to your blog or, you know, to get events or a freebie or whatever else that you have to offer. So that's my recommendations. Hopefully, do we have enough of a connection to chat before we get going?
Not sure.
Oh, I can hear you. No, I think you're, you're clear. I can hear you clearly. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so. I thought I had already broken up my, this. I thought I'd already broken up my. I thought I broke that, this page up already.
Got you. Okay. I, I don't see it in your page list. So, um,
Okay.
Yeah, so what I would recommend that you do is you can actually start with the about me template here if you want. This is, this could kind of jot, you know, kinda get things going. It looks like, I think you actually started with, with something like that here. Um, okay, yeah, yeah. So I, I would, I would just consider creating a new page where we can really pour that focus into your story so people can learn what to do with it. And, um, and then from there, definitely make sure that on your page, that one of these menu items up here is about me. Right? Like, read my story, learn more or something like that so that you are pointing people to it. Um, we wanted, people will be more impacted by things that they feel autonomy or authority connected to, right? Like I made the choice to go there instead of, you know, it's, it's the same reason why a lot of us are really hesitant to be sold to if we haven't been spoken to yet, right? Um, so if we're putting information out there and saying, hey, here's this and you can learn more through door number one, right? Like people are gonna love walking through that door and learning what's there because they chose to go there. So that really does kind of give them the experience that they need to, to be able to take in your story cuz they should take that in.
Hey.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing with us today, Sharon. Alright, you guys. Thanks again to Jess for being here. Let me Brady Bunch this. Everybody, hi. We had two Jesses today, bonus. Um, awesome. So, uh, you guys, we're back next week, noon Eastern as always. And, uh, excited to have Jess come back and share some more insights with us on how to grow your social following. Um, you guys come prepared with questions maybe about how Jesse uses get oiling for this because don't think for a second that that three-hour-a-week strategy does not involve using our system. Right? Yes, Jess is gonna show you guys some cool stuff, but in the meantime, free challenge starts Monday. Get on the list. You're gonna get notified on Sunday, get access to that vault. Um, there will be an opportunity in the future to be able to get access to it in a not-live fashion. But if you wanna do this live, and boy, do you wanna do this live, go get on the list, modernsocialmama.com. And, uh, you guys, we'll see you next week back here, same place.